Sorry about that, Joe. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand. Joe, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and call roll call. Looks like Miss is not here. Libby?
Here.
Tanya?
Here.
Becky?
Here.
Robert?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
I declare we have a quorum. Uh, can I get a motion approved minutes of last week, the last two weeks ago?
I make a motion to approve minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll subside. No one here. Okay, uh, first discuss new business. Discuss Mill Street Alley Enhancement for the Winter Festival 2021. Bob Starett. Bob, please come up.
Yeah. I do have a handout, whether you want it or not. They may already have it here. If you don't want it, give it to your kids, I guess. So, I'm far enough away. Do you mind if I take my mask off?
Yes, please.
I've also been vaccinated, so. Okay, is this on?
I think that the volume's just turned. Okay.
Alright, anyway, I'm Bob Starett. I'm with Four Wheel Action. Considering the, the Main Street renovation that's going on right now, Four Wheel Action is proposing enhancement of the Mill Street Alley. Uh, it runs about a hundred thirty-five feet from Main Street West. Uh, it's been closed since about 2012 with through traffic. It's been used as a walkway. It's poorly lit for night use. Um, and is somewhat unsightly compared to what Main Street will look like after the enhancements are done. So what we're proposing to do, and this is hopefully through a grant, but I need your approval to go ahead forward with this project is, uh, we've talked to Desco, uh, they're the ones that do the floors, like, uh, Taxman and Line Drive. They also have an outdoor version of the, the treatment. To keep from making something permanent that would be in the way of doors and things like that, put a treatment down on the asphalt. Preferably in the, it would look like a path with the different colors of paint. Uh, we'd like to install about sixteen posts down through there in a zigzag, and that's one of the drawings that's in there for the line. That will be four feet away from the buildings on both sides. We'll also leave, I talked to Joe about this, uh, leave seven feet in the middle, so the snowblower can still go down through there. Any, any, any of that type of equipment can get down through there. We'd like to have the, the lighting attached to the top of the poles in a zigzag and, uh, Talking to Joe and Libby during the renovation of Main Street, we would need electricity right there at the entrance of that alley, uh, right there by Ultimate Nutrition. Uh, which, as of right now, would look like maybe be able to do that. Um, and that would just run the lighting all the way down the alley. Uh, Our idea is to, uh, th- those are the two main things that we want to see done. Finish the, the, the asphalt and put lighting up as far as safety and just appearance in general, but in addition to that, which is why I put additional pieces in your handout. We'd like some benches and some seating, some, uh, ADA bench seating, so wheelchairs can pull up there. The out of the way, there'll be a, you know, closer to the building. We have four feet to work with from the poles towards the building, which would be plenty of room for people to still use the walkway, some mistro tables. Uh, I had some, some copies of what, a few samples of what Desco can do, but they said they, they, you talk about good people, they're, they're just pretty much do whatever we ask them, that they have lots of ideas for us. And then, uh, The, this whole project, it just so happened that there's a, a grant available through Hancock County Foundation. And we, we have given them the letter of intent that we would like to apply to that. That's how the process goes for a, uh, nonprofit, but we, we told them we would like to do this. They're supposed to come back and let us know if we can go ahead and apply for the grant itself, but we, we turned in all the pricing and everything else. Uh, it's a fifteen thousand dollar grant, which we would work on getting some donations to the project itself. But we just felt like with what's happening to Main Street, we, we don't want the alley to look like it does. Uh, it's, um, and this is, other than the electricity, The post at the entrance, this is an FAI project. We, if the town would like to help on any part of it, labor or anything like that, we'd love to have it, but this is truly just a Four Wheel Action project that we would like to do. But we need your approval to go further than that. It would not start, Joe and I've talked about this until Main Street's done, at least in that section. Whenever he says go, we can start it up. But we were looking at probably in August. Start takes him like a July, August. Um, and do you wanna say something now or you wanna wait?
Well, my, my part of it, my interest in it was, one, as a resident, I complain all the time because when we walk downtown, we'll cut through that alley. And, um, it's scary at night. It's dark. There are people that kind of linger down there. You don't know what they're doing.
Right.
Sometimes you're interrupting, yes.
I, I agree.
Um, but also as a Main Street owner, um, to help, like, I like the idea of the, the mistro tables out because of the Ultimate Nutrition. They, I'm sure they would love to have tables for their customers. Um, but as an art, uh, galley, kind of. And I've got, um, I've spoken to, um, an owner of a flower business in town and a couple other business owners and artists and, um, somebody else that can do some really cool things that could promote art. Um, and they've all agreed to donate their time to help beautify that, so.
And we, and we were thinking of this to be almost like a pocket park. Uh, you know, I'm sure Ultimate Nutrition would like to have mistro tables out there, but it'd be kind of neat if the people in town, if anybody got something to go and want to sit in the alley if it's nice outside. There'd be plenty of tables. It's not just for them, it's just for whoever is in town. If somebody wants to get something to go from the lagerage.
Yeah, I like the idea too that it, it pulls the legion in and the shops on that alley in the back, it, it will help draw people to the back, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I was walking down there the other day and I caught my shin on one of those.
Big boulders?
Boulders, yeah.
Yeah, and in the winter it's icy and we, we slipped and fallen.
And then, uh, the, the trouble with here with those boulders, it's hard for the guys to get in there clean up. The alley just needs to, a good leak blowing that I noticed the other day also.
I, I, I assume all that stuff's gonna be gone soon anyway, and we'll just start from scratch. The, and it's in the alley and be moved out for, you know.
I think FAI got those in there.
Yeah, they're, they're Johnstone, something.
Well, you're asking guys to get them relocated and get them out or get them back home wherever they need to go.
Okay. Yeah, uh, do, do we have a motion to approve?
I have some questions.
Okay.
So, I mean, obviously, I've been looking at that alley since, well, three, four years, right? So one of the questions that comes to my mind is who retains ownership of the tables and the benches and all of that? Would those be donations to the town then, or?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I mean, 'cause the light poles and the lights are donations to the town. Once they're in place, they're part of the structure, so absolutely, that's all.
I think it's a great idea myself. That was the only thing that jumped out to me was, was that part.
Sure, no, I haven't really thought about it, but yeah, we weren't gonna take them back later. We, uh, we were looking at some of the commercial grade tables and such, we're not just gonna throw some junk out there, but.
And Joe and Adam, you would be working with to make certain that it's something that you feel is gonna be, yeah. I make a motion to move forward with the project as presented, or at least allow the discussion to begin for a limited period of time.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Guys have it. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, I do have another, another.
What's, um, the post, what are, what are the materials you're using for the post, the net post?
Probably like a three or four inch pipe. Uh, we're talking to a couple different companies. Um, Joe and I talked about, and I know you were talking about maybe thirty to thirty-six inches into the ground. I'd like the post to be twelve inches high, or twelve feet high. So the, the wires, the lights are pretty high up, and you'd have to go out of your way if you want to do damage to it, that's all. And it would, as many lights as there are, it would be, even that high would be a really nice glow in there. LEDs to keep the electricity cost down and all that.
That'd be nice.
And while you're working on your design, I would recommend getting the light locates through there.
Yes.
The, the sewer's deep enough, it's not gonna be an issue, but if I recall, the phone cables and the conduits around the area are in a conduit about that wide, big square, and it's not as deep. So depending on where it's located.
Absolutely.
Might make a big difference on how you lay everything out.
Then I'll let you know before I, I call for the locate, that, again, that's not gonna be for a couple months anyway. Sure. I think that the grant is awarded in June and we have like twelve months to get it done. And we were, actually, which kind of leads me to my second item on here, the Winter Fest. We'd kind of like to have this done by the time Winter Fest rolls around. 'Cause it'd be, it'd look pretty nice to have that alley redone, so. I, this is not a long project. I, I, I know Desco can do this pretty quick. And he's got some ideas for the posters as well. He must have talked to me about, so I think we, I think this is doable, so. Also, I did not fill out all the paperwork yet. I started on it 'cause it's considerably different than the last time I saw it, but for an event, it's about four or five pages long now. But we would like to get, we're kind of excited. We think that it's gonna be safe to have Winter Fest again this year. We'd like to have it on December fourth. If you could at least give us a preliminary, we, you know, we have the insurance, we have all the stuff that we're supposed to have. And I'll make sure that the forms are filled up to show what it is, but we would like to get on the calendar, you know, and prove that we can have the Winter Fest on I- all of these, of course, I'll work with Patrick and Joe and you, just to make sure everything's good. If we can get December fourth locked down for Winter Fest.
Sometimes you might wanna know, and I think we may have talked about it, with the Main Street project finishing up probably around August or so, the electrical for the event, uh, that we're gonna be putting out there. That's all something that we're doing in-house ourselves or our contracts to do after this project's done. So after that project's done, we're gonna try to get started on that right away. I don't wanna make any promises. Power's gonna be everywhere that we're hoping.
And, you know, we can still, you know, with the power that's out of the parking lot, you know, we can run that and then the post office, we can run an awful lot of power and keep it right there if we have to do that again still, so we're, we're in pretty shape for that. We're hoping that, obviously, we're hoping for a big turnout because everybody's, it's something going on. And but, uh, so we're, we're kind of excited about actually starting to plan the Winter Fest, but we'd like to go back to twenty nineteen like it was, so. So can you at least give me a preliminary or a paper?
Um, do you have, what do we, we need to sign, are we, are we gonna work up a piece of paper?
That's what you were saying, or there's a document for him to.
Completely different than, it even asks for vendors. I have no idea who our vendors are gonna be. I mean, that just, that happens like right at the last minute. I'm not sure. There, there, I, I've got almost everything else on the form filled out as far as the streets, where the blockages would be, which is basically what they have always been. Um, it, it's exactly like it was, but there's a lot of questions on those forms that I've never seen before. I don't know, I, I've been off FAI for a couple of years, but, yeah.
I think, uh, before we go there, Fritz was asking if you need any type of documentation to move forward with securing this grant you're talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I thought you meant the Winter Fest. Okay, no, no, I'm sorry. Uh, not, I might.
Okay.
Um, there's a, they're supposed to get back with us. AGCF is supposed to get back with us within the next couple of weeks, I believe.
And they, they.
It's not, it's not.
And they, they.
And so, yes, if there is, to just say that, that I'm as happy with, I would love to have that letter of, of.
Well, the council will permit it this evening, so it'll show up in a minute. It'll show up in a minute. So we'll be able to prepare a document and have council sign off on it.
That's pretty exciting.
Yeah, that's you. I appreciate that. Um, I make a motion to tentatively approve the December fourth request per getting our.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll work with you on it.
Okay, tiny second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, back to the agenda. Unfinished business. Council, hold a second. Reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-one, three A, rezoning of four ten South Oak Street from residential three point five to, to commercial community CC on point one seven acres. Hi, Joe.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Adam Zach Lipowski, the planning and building director for the town of Fortville. Uh, this case before you tonight, if you recall, was at your last council meeting for first reading. Uh, it's a rezone, four ten South Oak. Looking to change the zoning from R three point five to community commercial. Um, I'll skip ahead on some of this since you're familiar with it, um, but I just wanted to bring you up to date that it did go to the plan commission. And the plan commission issued a favorable recommendation on March thirtieth at the meeting, um, subject to a couple of conditions, and we'll go to those conditions momentarily. Here's where the subject property is located, and certainly if we need to come back to any of these, we can. Um, this is what the site plan would look like. The area that's outlined in red is the actual lot that's being rezoned. Um, the site plan itself will have to go to the plan commission for approval as well, and that's technically scheduled for, uh, next month's meeting at this rezone where to, where to pass here tonight. Um, the, the one item, the few items that I did wanna go through today is, per Indiana code, um, anytime you're considering a rezone, Um, there's some different criteria that you need to factor in as part of your decision. Also, I wanted to provide you with that information here tonight. So first, is this rezone consistent with the comprehensive plan? Yes, it is. Uh, the town of Fortville Future Growth Concept Map from March of twenty sixteen identifies this parcel as commercial. You can see there's the actual map itself. Number two, is it consistent, is this rezone consistent with the current conditions and the character of the current structures? I say that technically not today, uh, but it would be upon development. And additionally, having a historic home near a commercial corridor on Broadway that could be used for professional services like an accountant or a law office would be reasonable for this structure. I should say the main reason why this is moving forward is the property owner, Mr. Fence, would like to, um, have additional parking in the back of, uh, the home That would connect to the main parking lot at Denver's Pizza, which is currently under, underway. Uh, number three, is this rezone consistent with the most desirable use of the land? I'd say yes. The parcel is shown as commercial in the comprehensive plan. Number four, is it consistent with the conservation of property values? I'd say yes. It would not negatively impact the surrounding properties, providing That reasonable restrictions on lighting, parking lot screening, or landscaping are provided. Those are things that the plan commission will take a look at in more detail as part of their site plan review. Um, additionally, this area is adjacent to commercially zoned land already and within very close proximity to the Broadway Commercial Corridor. And the last one is, is this consistent with responsible growth and development? My opinion would be yes. Um, since it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and it's adjacent to commercially zoned land, it'd be consistent with responsible growth and development, simply put. Um, there was some remonstrance that was expressed to the, uh, plan commission. Uh, Mr. Terry Hiles, Joyce Perkins, um, they're both opposed to the rezone and they express concern about lighting and noise. And this is, uh, where the remonstrators either owned and or resided in relation to the subject property. So based on the, uh, some of the concerns that were raised at the plan commission meeting, Um, the plan commission issued a favorable recommendation with the following two conditions that, um, We would ask that you impose on this rezone as well. Uh, number one, that the existing home on the property shall remain and shall not be demolished. Uh, that was something that some of the neighbors were looking for. I think they were concerned that, you know, a historic home would be demolished for parking. That seemed like a reasonable, um, solution to one of their concerns. And then the second condition would be that the only uses permitted on this property shall be parking and or professional services, law office, accountant, et cetera. The reason for that is the commercial center zoning does allow a pretty wide variety of commercial uses, and of course, it is obviously close to residential, uh, residential property. So the types of uses that the town, uh, town staff and plan commission would wanna see on there would be something that has a role in that, uh, on those neighboring properties. So with that, if you have any questions or need additional information, I'd be more than happy to, to help. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, aren't any questions?
Any questions for Adam?
Everybody's looking at me.
Do you have any questions?
Adam, I do have one quick question. If these restrictions are put on there, this being requested here, as the properties around become more commercial, then these can be amended off of this to match what's currently going on. It'll be a day or two after it becomes more commercial or something.
They could be. Um, in order to, in order to amend those conditions, I would have to go back through the same process. I'd have to go to the plan commission, have to go to council, for you to revisit those. Um, and additionally, We do have a mechanism for being able to track these conditions. There's a certain notation that we put, put on the zoning map, um, to basically alert the, the reader That there are some special conditions on that, and we've done that before. It's pretty typical.
In one of the letters I read, they were worried about the parking in front of their homes. How is that going to be, uh, managed? Is it, is there parking currently? Is that where they park right now? Do you guys know?
It's not on the street.
Did they have driveways?
They have street parking out there, yes. They have alley parking.
I live alley parking, yeah.
Oh, in the back behind, okay.
They, the, with this parking lot, it'll help parking, 'cause by having a parking lot, then they're all gonna be parking on the street.
Yeah, no, I, I figured you probably have enough spots to cover who all's sitting in there, but, um, I think somebody said double park, you know, what am I gonna do if I, you know, unload groceries? So I thought, gosh, if this is their only access to their home, I didn't know they had alley access.
Yeah, there's alley access.
But that's pretty much anywhere in town. People's always complaining, they're parking in front of my house. Yeah. I'm sorry, it's public parking.
In front of my mom and dad's house, so they have no access to their front door usually.
Yeah.
You know, but it's.
Well, we did consider, one of the, uh, uh, remonstrators had an interesting comment, as they said, well, can you, can you block off The access from Oak Street to, to the main portion of the back end of the lot? Basically, you coming off of Broadway and kind of work your way behind the building. It wasn't a bad idea, but the problem is there's not enough, not enough room to be able to get a vehicle kind of around there into the back lot, so. Um, so I understand what they're trying to achieve, but, um, we'll certainly look at.
Well, that access won't be there after they do the road die anyway, really.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, that'll go away, so once the road dies, then they can't, they can't even access.
Right, well, unless, you, correct, you're correct on that point. If the, the other option is if the driveway was further north on Oak, But even then, that wouldn't be advisable either, 'cause it's too close to the intersection, so we did look at a few different possibilities, you know, being respectful of their, um, concerns. But the other thing on, uh, lighting is that, um, the lighting is required to be fully capped and fully shielded, so it's all pointed downward. So you'll just have, you won't be able to see a bulb. It'll just be a gentle washer light, uh, which is required by code, pretty typical, so.
How many lights do you need to have in that parking? It's an L shape?
I've only got two.
I can't remember. They're wall mounted?
By the wall mounted facing down.
Yeah.
But I could change that. I, I'm not for, I don't really care. If somebody wants me to change the lighting, that's not a big deal to me.
I didn't know if there was a standard, and I'm just very.
That's what Adam and I were talking about. There is no standard on lighting or, or voltage, and that might be something that we should look and address now. 'Cause once we get Broadway starting to develop more and more, there's gonna be more and more different types of lighting. And I don't know how to go forward with it. I think Lindsay, a few years ago, mentioned something about hiring a lighting engineer to kind of guide us through that, but, um, I don't know where it's at now.
Yeah, the, the, um, one issue with lighting, it, it won't be a problem on this project because of the scale. But Fritz's point is that, um, Yes, we have to make sure that the lights are pointed downward, that they're shielded, and that takes care of, you know, ninety-five percent of cases. What I've seen before is, a lot of times with gas station canopies, is if there's not, uh, There's not a requirement on the intensity of light, which we don't have, then sometimes, if you, in gas stations, uh, the operators will take full advantage of that and really, um, light those up pretty well, so. Um, certainly down the road, if there were to be a lighting consultant, or, or mainly cherry pick language from other municipalities, that's usually the one problem that, that you can solve by doing that.
You have a question? I make a motion to approve the second reading.
Do, do we have anybody in the audience that wanna come up then?
Well, I'll stay open.
Make a motion to approve the second reading for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash three A, rezoning of four ten South Oak Street from residential three point five to commercial community on point one seven acres as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I'll, um, subside on that. Thank you. The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay.
Do you need to sign this?
That will be sent tonight, yeah.
Oh, this one.
Make sure I get them figured on.
Okay, uh, moving forward, uh, non-traditional vehicle ordinance. I'm not sure where to start on that. Do you?
I guess we're just looking for more public, I guess, more.
Oh, public, okay.
We pretty much talked, all we can talk about, technical department.
Do you have any, uh, public comment that wanna come up and talk about the, um, non-traditional vehicle ordinance? Thank you. Um.
So this should be just the first review on this, right?
Um, did it, yeah, I don't think we ever proceed.
Never had the first review.
Right.
I don't sign it? Okay, scratch my name. Oh, that's probably what I was saying. I always thought I was signing it for legal reasons. Sorry.
This is just for more discussion. For the, over the, uh, small deals and ACVs, just for a matter of discussion. We're not here for the last news.
Right.
So we just want a little bit of public.
There's a line in here that wasn't written right. I can't remember what's at, I forgot to mark it.
Well, we can have public discussion this evening, and we still need to get an analysis of that. He's, he's been working on it.
And I'll find that line, 'cause there's something in here that's not right, and that we should release something about.
I'll make a motion we table with the next meeting.
Do I have a second to table?
Oh, a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll just. Yeah, uh, opposed? Okay, do you need? Okay, I'm on my agenda again. I'm shut on papers again. Okay, moving on to reports.
Don't sign it.
Don't sign it. That's fine, thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you. If I was tired, I hadn't decided. Okay, Joe, you got a report for us, please?
Yeah, I got a couple of items to go through here this evening. The water treatment plant draft was supposed to be back to you folks by April 15th. They contacted me this morning asking for just a couple more weeks or thinking they'll have the draft done by April 30th. It will not slow down any of the process as far as if we move forward to build everything. It's just during this, this first phase, so it doesn't delay when the plant would get up and get to running. So, but it looks like it's going to be first thing they do before they have that draft back to us. Utility write-offs that the council had approved a couple meetings ago, just to let you know that all has been done. Main Street, they've been working on the storm inlets, kind of do a storm pipe down the middle of the street. It's been a little bit of a mess, happened to close the road offs because they've been digging all the way across the road. They've got all the asphalt patching done today, should be done today, is what they were working on. I believe it's about 5:30. Tomorrow, they're going to start setting up the retainer wall or the divider walls, the barriers, and starting on phase one. So that should be started this week.
Thank you.
So far, we have found two fuel tanks very under Main Street. One of them is down in front of Starell's Building. They've done all their inspections on the ground. That tank's been removed. It's not a major deal. It's going to be a little bit of a change order. We've got to determine that cost yet. And then the other one they found was down in front of the old hardware, more of the lumberyard where the left chapel was, where the ATA, the karate place is at now. So they found a pretty good sized tank there that has still got a lot of liquid in it. So they're doing some inspection on that and hopefully we'll get that out this week. The new dump truck is here. I don't know if anybody's seen it sitting outside. We left it out here for you guys to see when we pulled in. A pretty big white truck with an orange plow on it, if you missed it.
So, and then other than that, I'll be out of the office April 13th and 14th for training
water certificates. That's all I have. Unless you got questions for me.
It's all signed.
Yeah, finally, right?
Where are you going to training at, Las Vegas?
It's actually French Lake.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Okay, Parks Manager, Heath.
Heath, as a Parks Manager, for the record, just got a couple things for you. We talked previously about the slide that's going in the Memorial Park. After laying everything out, we are going to slide, no pun intended, to slide over. So it's probably not going to affect any of the sledding hill as it sits. There is an old drinking fountain and stuff down there, but there's, just worked out that the length of everything, once we laid it all out, was going to work better, a little bit closer to the pavilion. I think it's going to look really nice, so hopefully that will appease everybody. We'll get the best of both worlds. The other thing was, I had sent Joe the quote for the basketball lights, if anybody's interested in seeing those. It's kind of been put on hold a little bit with everything going on at the water plant. Not sure if we can wrap certain activities, things up into that, but that's one thing I'll be getting more prices on, hopefully, and see what that, that looks like. So, that's it. Any questions for me?
Just to add a little bit to what Heath was saying, with the water plant, you know, we're looking to do the bot. So while we're out there doing that, we're also looking at some other possibilities, how it could benefit some of those lights and the community center and some of those other things that we're looking at and possibly be wrapped up. And they'll be part of the report that you guys will be getting.
Any, any estimates on reporting the tennis court? I know that's been discussed.
Uh, that has been discussed. It's also one of the projects that it sounds like will be in the report. So tennis courts, getting that resurfaced with pickleball and tennis with new nets, lighting over there fixed, all that, that kind of encompasses what should be on that, so.
Heath, if we don't end up going with the bot and doing this project, in that way, what's your time look like on the slide?
When it's done?
Starting.
Starting, uh, we're supposed to start that end of this month, first part of May is when project's supposed to start on that. The problem that we have over there is, if anybody knows the area, obviously all the water sheds that way. So now that we've moved it over a little bit, I'm, I'm not too concerned about drainage over there, but one of the things that the, the project for the slide is going to entail is putting in French drains then around that area to the creek. So that should help with some of that water down the bottom, but we're just, we'll wait until the end of the month is when we're supposed to go.
One of the things we'll have to coordinate timing on is with this water plant, it may end up telling us that we need to replace the, the raw water line that comes from well number one, which will go right through where you're sitting there. So we may have to reroute that, but I want to make sure that we.
Okay. And I, this is something you and I, I can talk about, but I think, I, I don't think that wall, raw water line has, I don't think we've found, we've marked everything over there, that control wire and the main, but I haven't seen where that raw water line runs yet, so.
It should be pretty close to where the power wire is that runs the well.
Okay.
And marked it.
Okay.
Other than that, if it's not, it's an old PVC pipe that's been in there since before they started running crazy marge. So it's a big problem.
Do you have any updates on the community center and like what's going on there? Your office is there and what else is happening?
Yeah, I mean, the office is there. We're looking at, well, that's really about it. It's opened back up. We've got some people looking to rent outside of that, you know. Unfortunately, with the community center, not necessarily unfortunately, but that community center is set up in a way that it's kind of single function, right? It's got the gym. We don't have a lot of room as far as, you know, there's birthday parties and things like that, renting it out. The Lions Club now, the Lions Club room with the glass door there, we're hoping to be able to have some more meetings and such over there. You know, it'd be a great space eventually for things like wedding receptions, stuff like that, but I think it's going to have to be retrofitted a little bit before, before that can happen, so.
The class doors end now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's been done for.
Before the election.
Yeah, it was done. That was one of the reasons why they pushed to get it done, was for security for the elections. Because if you remember, that all used to be wide open and with the presidential election this past year, they were very concerned, Hancock County Voting Commission was very concerned about getting, you know, people in there and out, but having, having locked doors. So that was done last October, I think, ish.
Does anybody use the gym all now?
This time of year, not so much. We ended up, Joe had asked me to run some numbers. Don't quote me on this, I can tell you it somewhere was right around $9,100 that we lost in rentals over the course of COVID. So the gym was full from basically mid-November through first of March, but because of COVID this year, all of those basketball teams, we not only had the Optimist basketball this year, we had Mountain Travel basketball playing in there, we had another independent travel program playing out of there, which was a lot of time rented. Unfortunately, it just didn't pan out with COVID. Everybody canceled, there's Optimists canceled their basketball season. We were in the red for a while. We had a beginning center shut down. Most of those programs had more than 25 people that they wanted to bring in and for weeks at a time, we had 25 or less as far as, you know, gatherings were concerned. So it just, it worked out like that, unfortunately, so.
I had a couple more things for you. Last time you had talked about your, you got a big project with the restroom facilities over there by the dog park?
Yes.
How's that coming?
Uh, almost done. The water is in after much work. The electrical gets put in from the restroom to the pole tomorrow and Duke is supposed to hopefully be out within the next three days after that to hook it up from the pole to the transformer and we will have a functional restroom at the dog park. So.
And then, I've not asked you this before, so it's certainly not urgent, but you've done a great job updating us on the basketball courts, tennis courts tonight, community skate park. Can I just get a check or as far as the stat, you know, how's the equipment going? Any thoughts on expanding that? Because whenever I go through there, there's people there every time.
Do you want to know my true feelings?
You can put that in email if you want. So just your thoughts.
Yes, it's busy. It's, it's most definitely busy. I can tell you that 85 to 90% of the vandalism within the parks is contained within a certain area of the park. So, yes, there, I have my own thoughts, but it, it does get used and I don't want a few fat apples to run for everybody else. But that is something that, you know, if the money's there and we want to talk about, you know, making that a little bit nicer.
Well, not only just that, but the condition of what's in there and all that good stuff.
Yeah, I mean, the condition of what's in there is, is fairly good. I'm not a skater, so I can really tell you. I mean, I can look around and see that there's not any huge cracks in the cement, things like that that would cause hazards. But, you know, as far, the equipment's good other than the graffiti.
Okay.
The fencing around it's getting a little old. Part of that's because it's been ripped apart and torn down. When we had closed it down for a little while, there were some, there were some individuals that decided to shred the fencing. But one of the things that I think will help with that, if I'm being completely honest with you, is once this power is secure at the restroom facility, I will have cameras over there. I will be putting in cameras at the dog park, facing the dog park and the skate park. So if there is anything moving forward, I think once people figure out that there's cameras on that location, you know, just like kind of everything else, it, it tends to, you know, curb a lot of that, so.
Perfect. Thank you. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing.
I thought you were going to bring me something, but I know you were just talking about the Arbor Day, that is the end of this month.
Yes. Well, I didn't know a lot of, I didn't know the extent of which some of that was running as, as we've discussed prior to me showing up as far as the event itself. What I can tell you is we've got our trees ordered again this year, our free trees. We've got 100 red buds and 100 tulips ordered. Instead of it being here this year, I'm actually going to move it over to the community center. We're going to, I'm trying to get people over to the park at that point in time. And along with that, you were asking about the community center, I'm trying to get a big shadow box to be able to put up inside that community center to put different events, that type of thing, inside that shadow box. One of the things that we do have going on actually is approached by Jessica Doherty of the high school. I don't know if anybody knows her, but she was talking about doing a cardio fit class on Mondays and Sundays over at the community center. So that's something we're working at doing. We're hoping to be able to promote that and continue with, you know, unfortunately, a small parks department, a lot of them throughout the state, what they do is they rely on either volunteers or third party people to kind of run their programming for them, not necessarily for them, but for instance, Jessica would run this, but it would be sponsored by the parks department, so we would promote it as a parks department thing, but she would be the one responsible for handling that. So that's something we've got to look into. I, I've got some stuff from the fee schedules that we need to look at as a town. I know Joe sent a message to Alex about that particular thing. We haven't heard back from him yet, but moving forward, I, end of the fall, just so everybody's aware, I'm going to approach you guys about putting in fee schedules for our outdoor facilities as well as our indoor facilities. We're losing a lot of money from the, the amount of practices that we're having in our outdoor facilities from independent travel teams, not necessarily the Optimists, but our independent travel teams, as well as some of the pavilions and outdoor shelters that are kind of first come, first served. If somebody wanted to rent that for a birthday party, for example, and know that they don't have to worry about somebody else being there, putting in a fee schedule for something along those lines as well, so.
Is the head start still at the community center?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Adam. Get really quick, but I just wanted to let everybody know that as expected, the State Office of Community and Rural Affairs, OCRE, awarded the town the $250,000 for the stellar facade repair grant. So we're moving full speed ahead with that and particularly exciting because this is the first official stellar money that's going to start showing up here. So we've been waiting for a while, but they're finally showing us the money, so just want to let you know about that. Thank you.
Adam, in one of the meetings, I know I sent you something because I got really excited because you proposed maybe having a facade program all the time available. Any progress on that?
Oh, sure. Let me just bring you all up to speed on that. So, OCRE wanted the town to take a look at other ways that the town could continue the momentum of the facade repair in the old town area after the state is done making their investment. So, one of the ideas that was pitched to the redevelopment commission is to establish a local facade repair program beginning in 2022. And so there's continued dialogue amongst the RDC members on how exactly to do that and how to fund it, how much to fund it, how many applicants would be allowed, but there, there does seem to be some consensus on that commission that they like the idea of, of having a local pot of money through their RDC funds to be able to continue that work going forward. Now it's just working on the details, so.
So anyone who didn't take advantage of the current facade opportunity is out of luck until 2022, perhaps?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, just to get you up to speed on our license plate readers, I know last time we talked about NDOT denied the first set of permits we put in, they didn't like the one on the west side of town, so we just moved it back 100 feet. It's at NDOT now, looking to get approved this week. We'll start work hopefully next week if it gets approved this week. They said about a one week turnaround from approval. So that project is still going. I'd like to approach the council and parks about having our community night at the park on August 28th. I talked with Heath briefly. He said that's a good night. It's a Saturday evening. We're going to have a band and a cookout like we always do and have events for families and all that type of stuff. I'm sorry?
August 12th?
August 28th. Stuff like a blessing to do that, if that's okay.
What time is it, Patrick?
We usually do like a four to nine, and I know Big Roscoe on the hammers, we're supposed to do our Christmas party this year, but since we canceled due to COVID, we'd already prepaid them, so we have a free concert coming. So we're going to do that. I've contacted the SWAT team, tentatively, as long as you guys approve it this evening, they'll come out. I'm going to try to get lifeline this year and maybe fly in a chopper and let the kids check it out and do all that.
Did he, did you check on the calendar with your carrier, Heath, to see if there was something else planned for that day?
I talked to Heath, he said he didn't think so.
Because I know it seemed like there was something else. What is it? Cystic fibrosis?
Cystic fibrosis, I don't think it's 28th.
It's in August, I think.
I think it's the weekend before that. I'll double check, but it's Thursday day though, too.
I don't like that.
Yeah, bicycle.
Yeah.
The bike ride.
Yeah.
Yeah, they always reach out and ask on that, too, and we provide traffic assistance for that.
I just remember it's around August, I was going to make sure we don't double.
Usually mid-August, if I remember right. If anybody would like to make a motion for that, I'd appreciate it.
I make a motion to approve Heath's request for National Night Out Saturday, August 28th, usage of Landmark Park.
I say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you. I talked with Alia about Cami's cause this year, they're going to do it at the park also. I believe they've already got the date set with you all, or if they're going to approach you with the date set. We'll be escorting them on a motorcycle ride over to Lynn, Indiana, where their family farm is again. It's a great cause, it's a great time for everybody, and we're definitely going to support it. So we'll be doing that. Hiring process, we are down to 11 full-time applicants. There were several that flunked the PT test and several that flunked the written test. So we're down to 11 full-time applicants. We'll be moving forward with those. We do currently have six that.